Is that because? He is the creative word. Amen? Then you have to understand what that means for us. Because if we are made in God's image and likeness, it means there's a possibility and power also of creative force towards words. Am I right? Now, if God never reset until recent times created anything, then God eternally never spoke. For his word is creative. Now, Colossians 1:17 says, "He is before all things," that is Jesus. And by him, all things consist or are held together. He is the origin, the source, and the cause. Now, let me give you another scripture, Romans 11, verse 36, for those who are following us. "Far from him, through him, and to him are all things; for all things originate with him and come from him." That's what the Amplified says it. So the logos provides insight to us. And it carries the idea of a word spoken, speech, reason, thought, intent, and concept. It's wider than just what we consider a word. Because it refers not only to the word that is spoken, expressed, and manifested, but also to the purpose, thought, intent, and will of God behind that which is expressed. For example, we meet in Hebrews chapter 4 and verse 12, the concept. But the word of God is quick, powerful, sharper than any two-edged sword, dividing us under spirit and soul. Now, let's think through the process now. The word is an expression of thought, am I right? A purpose, an intent, a will. So in order to have a word, you need a thinker. Am I right? The Father is the great thinker. The Father thought, and then he spoke, and from the bosom of the Father, the word came forth. A word is spoken whole by forcing breath to the mouth. And what is breath? Spirit. So it's an interrelationship now. Rock, wind. Now, notice what Jesus himself said he was on earth. John 6:63, let's look at it. "The words that I speak unto you, they are spirit and they are life." Am I right? So the words originated out of the action of God's spirit, just as our words originate out of the action of our breath. When God speaks, when the word goes forth, the dynamics of it is this. Energy is translated into matter. That's why matter came into being. Because the word is quick, it's alive, am I right? It's powerful. So energy is translated into matter. Now, let me give you the process though, the scientists did the reverse. In a real sense, matter is energy slowed down in its vibration until it changes form, becoming tangible and visible. Now, the thing that the scientists stepped into when they made the atomic bomb is this. Atomic fusion is the reverse. It is matter translated back into pure energy. That's why it's so destructive. Because they can't control it. In the beginning, the word was with God. The word was God. So the word came out of God by the power of his spirit. Now, one of the Greek scholars, Mr. Vincent, says logos therefore signifies both the outward form by which the inward thought is expressed and the inward thought itself. So let me go a little further, because I want you to understand, because these are some, because I have to correct something, because even some of what you have heard at some of your churches, I have to correct some of them. The idea is of God, who is in his own nature, him revealing himself. Because his spirit, the castor's spirit. Now, every genuine person is revealed by his word. Am I right? Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. Is that right? Now, that which was expressed by God in thought, word, and deed was the very essence and character of the Father. When his word became flesh and dwelt among us, the glory of the Father for the first time could be seen in the world in a personality. Or God's spirit. Where is no see in personality? In a personality. Now, so Jesus is the manifest declaration of the Father. That is why he could say, "He that has seen me has seen the Father," in John chapter 14. "He that has seen me has seen the Father." Now, let me say something. If you understand what God is after, God wants us to reach a place in our own growth that we can say to people with a boastfulness because of the transformative work of the Spirit in our life. If you see me, you see Jesus. Jesus Christ is the sole expression of the glory of God. The light being, Hebrews 1:3 says in the Amplified, "The out-raying, outshining, are the radiance of the divine." And it says also in the Amplified, "The perfect imprint and very image of God's nature." Hebrews 1:3. Now, let's go further now, because this is very critical. God always possessed the ability of speech. That is what the word is, God's expression in speech and manifestation, to use a more technical term. The word is the emanation of his thought. God's purpose to make his word visible, just as we do when we write our thoughts in a book or in a letter. But it was not the language whether Aramaic or Greek, that he spoke that made him the logos. Because he's a holy party, not a theologian, especially a rabbi, oh, God's spoken. I'm trying to say that. God's spoken Hebrew, I'm speaking Aramaic, and you have to go back to that origin, that language to understand. No, no. Let me share something with you. It was not the language, Aramaic, Hebrew, or English, that he spoke that made him the logos. It was who and what he was. Now, let me just mention straightforward. The word was not made Hebrew or Greek. The word was made flesh. What is happening now? There's a fascination in studying Hebrew and giving Hebrew and Greek words. The word was not made Hebrew or a book, but the word was made what? Flesh. Hallelujah. That's what's missing from Christianity. We have a lot of teaching, but the word has not been made flesh in the lives of people. Hallelujah. The word did not become a language. The word became a man and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory. Am I right? It was not the language that was important. It became flesh. So all of this dispute that we have in our people getting fascinated, oh boy, you have to study Hebrew. You have to study Gematria. You have to study, you know, this word in Hebrew alphabet, Zion and Beth and all of that. No, no, no. The word was not made that. Of flesh it was made. Hallelujah. In fact, let me just boom up the whole thing now. We're coming out of time for gold corners. No person who has not accepted Jesus as the Messiah. No rabbi. Supposed to have more understanding because there's a veil over their eyes until they turn to Jesus. Paul says in 2 Corinthians 3, "The veil is removed when they turn to the Lord." Am I right? So we have a lot of people who are running, don't rub any teachings. They have not accepted Jesus as the Messiah, which is the most important revelation anybody can have. Now, so the word did not become a language. The word became a man and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory. Now, let's continue. Glory to God. God is before all things, a dimension removed from our conception of things. So when God spoke, he emanated, and the spirit, out of that realm came something into this realm. And this first emanation was in the form of words. And the word is God. Something created. But God himself in emanation and expression and revelation, that's what the word is. So when God spoke, his speech was the very creative energy of his thought and flowed forward as spirit and life. Now, let me share something with you, because as I said, I've been getting into this thing, and I know hearing it one time is not good enough. God's speech was the putting forth of his power, which was the emanation of himself. And the word emanation has to do with the origination of the world by a series of radiation that comes from a being. That's what we really talk about. Even the people who are not Christians understand this. The word is not another person. A second God. I want to clarify these things. A second person of the Goded. The word is not no second person of the Goded, but God himself in emanation. God's word through the spirit is the connected link between God and his creation. The word, as it has been revealed to man, has been the visible expression of the invisible God. Now, let me share, because I'm going over these concepts. In other words, the invisible God embodied himself, became flesh in a visible form that could be seen, heard, touched, handled, understood, and comprehended in the earth realm. So because God is spirit, he's in his normal state, invisible, and omnipresent. He does not have to go anywhere to get there. And if you make a bed in hell, the Bible says he's there. Am I right? He does not have a natural body to manifest himself, except temporarily, where God would appear, the God temporarily in the Old Testament, and we call it Christopony, and we all see off on it, and all of that. And there's an important question you must think about. If God manifested himself in a corporal way in the Old Testament, what does it mean that when Jesus came then in a corporate form? Think about it. If God appeared in a corporate form, a corporate form, to say, "Abraham" as a man, remember three angels came, eight, and one of them, he says, "God", who stayed behind and talked him. You need to think about all of these things. Because these are serious things you need to think about. So was it God who took on a corporate, a corporate form in the Old Testament many times and appeared to people? Think about it. Yes. So God normally does not have a natural body to manifest himself, except temporarily. But in John, you see, the word was made flesh, tabernacle among us. We behold his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth. Now, turn to Colossians 1, verse 15. It says about Jesus, "He is the image of the invisible God." And the word image, here I looked it up, is a computer terminal, is the word that we use on computers, icon. Yes, you ever read that? The icon on the computer, is the same word? For image. The Greek word, E-I-K-O-E, for image. Interesting. Now, it says, "Jesus is the image of the invisible God," also in 2 Corinthians, chapter 4, verse 4. Now, Hebrews 1:3 says he's the express image of his person. Now, when it says the express image of his person, the word for person is a Greek word, koupo stasis. Koupo means under, and stasis means to stand. That's why, let me give you an example. The word stasis is related to the word histemmy. That is why, when you have cold, they give you a cold medicine called antihistemmy because it's related to the word histemmy, to stand. But in this case, it is antihistemmy. It means to stand against. You get a pill to stand against the cold. Are you understand what I'm saying? Now, all the character and inner nature of the divine was expressed through our Lord Jesus Christ. All the motive, the purpose, and the intent of God toward his creation is revealed to us through Jesus. That is why in that powerful scripture, 2 Corinthians 5, verse 19, it leaves no doubt for us, 2 Corinthians 5:19, to wit, that God was in Christ, who was in Christ, reconciling the world unto himself. Now, hallelujah. You're going someplace. We're all seeing some things because I said it's important. The scene of our new creation life is the same logos, resurrected and glorified. The word made flesh in us. Remember the term I used, by divine insemination. He comes to dwell in us by divine insemination. And through our union with Christ, in and by the Spirit, we are to be as he is. So are we in this world. Amen? So for the first time, Yahweh, what you want to call it, your everlasting has a permanent eternal body in which to walk and talk and show himself to mankind in Jesus Christ. But let me go further now. Because anything speaks about Jesus, you have to understand what that is after. He wants to reproduce himself in us. So it's not just Christ he wants to reproduce himself and show himself to, but he wants to show himself to the body of Christ. And the body of Christ is the host of a transformed people. Now, let me go a little further, because these things are important. The manifestation of God in the Old Testament, the revelation of himself was fragmentary. No one manifestation could speak all the truth. In a sense, each was but one or two syllables in the mighty sentences of God's speech. And they were partial and limited. But in Jesus, you understand, full truth now, Colossians 2, you need to get this, Colossians 2, verse 9. In him, Jesus dwelled all, not so, all the fullness of the Goded bodily. He has fully revealed the Father. If you see him, you have seen the Father. You can declare to the Father as pure spirit. The word became flesh, not was made flesh, became. That means his personal accomplishment from within. So, when you read Philippians 2, that powerful scripture, "Let this mind be new, which was also in Christ Jesus." Let's go to Philippians 2, amen. No, we took off. Philippians chapter 2. We're gathering up the Friday, but we're going somewhere. We're going to have a lot to meditate on over this holiday season. Take your notes and go and meditate. Philippians chapter 2. Verse 5. "Let this mind be new, which was also in Christ Jesus." Who been what? In the form of God, sought in that rubber to be equal with God. Amen? "But made himself of no reputation, took upon him the form of a servant, and was made in the likeness of men." So, he says, "Let this mind be in you." I wonder if you understand what that is telling you. You know, you have to know God for yourself in this time, because sometimes people try to intimidate you when you're not boasting in who you are, but what God has made you. Because apart from Christ, nothing. So sometimes I'm going to take you always about God is so good, and where, 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 and I'll take you on that. Who you think you are? Somebody may stop and tell you, tell me how much time do you have? Let me tell you what he has made me in Christ. Take away the initiative from me, because I want to intimidate you. Who you think you are? Let them know, is that who I think I am? He who he has made me by his grace. It's not a mind me choosing, it's who he has made me. You are hearing the whole story? I am not. Listen, and I forget to add some of the terminology that I'm using. I'm not just only human. I am not only human anymore. I am born again of an incorruptible seed of the word of God that liveth and abides forever. Divinity suffered on behalf of humanity, that humanity can be lifted into a higher realm. So don't tell me about Siporamo. Stop singing them wussy song about, "I'm only human." You have given yourself excuses to sing. You're not only human anymore. You're born again of an incorruptible seed of the word of God that liveth and abides forever. Be and speak what God has made you. You're a new creation. Old things seem to pass away. But if you don't believe that, where you want to step in it? Stop telling people that you're an earth dweller. No, you're seated in heaven in places in Christ Jesus. Stop telling people you're an earth dweller. Your citizenship is in heaven. You're just visiting earth. Because you have an assignment from daddy. You have to bring heaven to earth. He never say, he must, he said, "What's a prayer?" He must pray the Lord's prayer. "Thy kingdom come." "Thy will be done what?" "As it is in heaven." You are to bring heavenly things to earth. What we want run from earth to heaven. And if God said, "No, bring heaven to him now, hurt." But you cannot bring unless you know that's where your citizenship is. That's why Ephesians 1:3 says, "Blessed be the God and Father, for Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with all spiritual blessings here, in heavenly places, in Christ Jesus." That is why some people are suffering from a lack of blessings, because they don't, the blessings are here in heavenly places. Come to earth. They might take them and bring them to earth. Let me give you an example, practicality of spirituality. Jesus is walking on earth, and he's representing the kingdom of heaven and the kingdom of earth, of God, sorry. And what is happening? There's no sickness in heaven. So everywhere I'm going, he is sickness. Because he's bringing heaven to earth. There's no lack in heaven. So if you're hungry, and no matter five thousand men, women and children, another fifteen thousand, in multiplied food, because there's no lack in heaven. He's bringing heaven to earth. Do you remember what I pointed out to your people the other day? You have to have a change in your mindset, like when you go before people and they want to intimidate you. The prophet said to Ahab, "The Lord before whom I stand." The man is on earth, and he said, you answered to Ahab, "The Lord before whom I stand. I'm going to speak from where I am standing, before God in heaven. And heaven is God's throne, your power come from, and the earth is God's footstool." So I'm saying, listen, "I'm going to speak from the Lord before whom I stand in heavenly places." "There neither shall the Jew nor rean, but according to my word." He's speaking out of that dimension. There he is. Hallelujah. Glory to God. Now, God himself, through the power of his word, brought forth himself as a man. Let me repeat. God himself, through the power of his word, brought forth himself as a man. That's why first of all, the 3:16, if you've got any Jesus on the church, them lick the scriptures that, why? They lick you with a scripture. First of all, the 3:16, "Great is the mystery of Godliness." You ever go, you ever go to Pentecostal church, you hear that scripture? First of all, the 3:16, hallelujah. "And without controversy, without controversy, great is the mystery of Godliness." What he's saying, God was manifest in the flesh, justified in the spirit, seen of angels, preached unto the Gentiles, believed on in the word, and received up into glory. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Now, you have to understand, God and his word cannot be separated. The speech and the word of God became the son of God in human form. Here comes God out of the spirit realm, out of eternity, into the time-space continuum, to Bethlehem as a little baby. We are celebrating that now. Now, you have to understand what God is after. God is the high, prophet Isaiah says he's the high and lofty one who dwells in eternity. Am I right? What God wants to do near you because he's not satisfied in us living in the time-space continuum. When you get a resurrected, glorified body, you will separate this time-space continuum into eternity too. You have a body that is not subject to time and space. You get a body like Jesus's own body, but with a lesser degree of glory. Because there is a glory of the sun, there's a glory of the moon, and there's a glory of the stars. Now, so here comes God out of the spirit realm, out of eternity, into the time-space continuum, to Bethlehem as a little baby. That is one. If, I wonder if you sit down, people talk about Christmas, they must celebrate Christmas, but the magnitude of what they, I don't know if they understand. Divinity come dwell in the womb of Mary as a little child and grow and suck milk as my God. Grow. Now, let me share something that you don't see. Most of us don't understand. Jesus did something for us that's so great. Adam came from the hand of God, mature. Jesus come, the last Adam, as a little baby and grew, and still could overcome. He faced things that Adam never faced growing up as a child. The only thing he had to face in the garden was the serpent. Jesus had to face a world system governed by the serpent, plus tempted by the serpent himself. But yet overcame. Overcame fully processed and himself processed as a human being. God processed, went back into that realm of divinity, become glorified and became a quickening spirit. That means he was a life-giving spirit, and come, come dwell in us now. A life that has never been defeated, never been defeated. He put that kind of life in a mere, you know, that overcoming life, never defeated, and he grew up as a baby. Adam did not grow up as a baby. Adam had advantages. The Bible says in Luke, "He grew in wisdom, with favor with God and with man, as a child." Hebrews 5 says, verse 8, "He learned obedience by the things which he suffered." Adam never forgot to move, but he grew. Adam came from the creative hand of God, already mature, a man. Am I right? Hallelujah. So God no make no mistake, he said, "Listen, me go ahead, come here, defeat the enemy as a man. Give up my Godly privilege and come here, so come live." Divinity comes suffer on behalf of humanity to bring humanity back onto our relationship with God. Hallelujah. Hurt of Satanet. Hallelujah. Now, so God and his word cannot be separated. The speech of the word of God became the son of God in human form. So as I said, here comes God out of the spirit realm, out of eternity, into the time-space continuum, to Bethlehem, the house of bread as a little baby. as a little baby. And I pointed out to you all, a major scene and so many things that the narrative of the story them wrong. Because when them wise men then find Jesus, he was a two-year-old baby. And then a major scene, he was in the house. So change the narrative. Two years old. Hallelujah. Now, again, let me correct some of the theological thing that cause some of the semitism that teach them wrong things. Jesus is the son of God. Know that he was God, he was not God the son. There's no such Bible term for Jesus. He's a son of God, not God the son. As popular religion tells us. But God the son is not a scriptural term. Not in the scriptures. Now let me say something also. This other term that I'm using, this, the blessed second person of the garden is not in the scriptures. It is not in the Bible. For the blessed second person of the garden. Jesus, the opposite, is in the garden. Now I should put it this way. That is erroneous. That's what you hear from people, he's not in the garden. The Bible says the opposite, that Jesus is not in the garden. Let me correct it, why says? Colossians two nine, in him Jesus dwell all the fullness of the garden. He is not in the garden, but all the fullness of the garden is in him. And the word, play Roma, is a rich Greek word, fullness. Means fulfilled, to accomplish, to expand fully. Fullness. So the garden is in Jesus. But can I say something to you? If you read the next verse, you say sometimes it stops at the verse, all the fullness of the garden is in Jesus. But it didn't stop there. There's another thought that daddy wants to communicate. And ye are complete in him. Ye are what? Complete in him. That is why the people of the Old Testament team want to accept Jesus, said the rabbi, they cannot come into certain things. You couldn't know Hebrew language from where I'll go right, whatever, the A to the Z of Hebrew. If you not accept Jesus, certain revelation lock off to you. So the body of Christ is the completion of God's Christ. First Corinthians twelve says, as the body is not one, but many members, so also is Christ. So Christ is a many-membered body now. Of which Jesus is the head. Now listen to me here. So the body of Christ is the completion of God's Christ. The fullness of God is to be revealed in God's overcomers. In a way, difficult to grasp by the carnal mind, because in fact, Jesus said, listen, as I overcome and sit down, sit down by the father in his throne, so I go and overcome and sit down in my throne. There are some things that God promised some people. It is God dwelling in us that makes us sons of God. Just as it was God dwelling in Jesus that made him the son of God. The son of God did not become the word, it was the word made flesh that became the son. So it was not so much the teaching of the scriptures that made him the word of God, but the revealing of the mind, heart and will of the Father. Step from the natural things to the real spirituality. Let me repeat, a different way now. Here, brothers and sisters. The deity in Jesus was not God the son. The deity in Jesus was the Father. It was the Father dwelling in him that did the works, he says. Am I right? The extension. If you take this thing, the deity in Jesus was what? The Father. Do you know what God wants to do near you? Get some revelation about, oh, Jesus operated. I do nothing of myself, there's a Father that dwelling in me doing the works, now what he said? The works was not done because he my son of God, he says, the Father that dwelled in him. Am I right? So we are not God the sons, but we are sons of God. And it is the Father dwelling in us in Christ that makes us sons who does the works. God is finding expression in us also as we are born of the Spirit, conform to the image of God, matured in his nature, filled with his mind. The revelation of the Father in the Son, here in the earth realm, is bringing many sons to glory. Now let me give you two things to think about. I'm repeating some things by importance. As the word logos, Jesus could say this in John eight, verse fifteen. Before Abraham was, I am. Isn't that what he said? But as the son, he received the witness of the Father. Hebrews one five. So at my son, this day have I begotten thee. Always said the difference. As the word logos, Jesus could say this. Before Abraham was, I am. But as the son, he received the witness of the Father. Hebrews one five, though at my son, this day have I begotten thee. If I was to tell you something when you're born again, eternal spirit of God come dwell up in you, eternal spirit of God. If you could forget about carnal teachings that you get. Because if you were chosen in Christ from before the foundation of the world, there must be some consciousness and awareness that you had before the foundation of the world. What we need to do now is to tap in to the mind of Christ and find out what was it in eternity we agreed with daddy to come here and do. That is why you become dangerous once you start thinking that way. Where Jesus said, he knew what he came here to do. There are some things that you need to understand, oh God, these are some people that read. What happened to some of these men of God? I don't believe it's not relevant to you. Paul persecuting the church. And see a man dying defending Jesus, and Paul is watching the clothes of the man there. Concerning to the death of Philip. But Paul has been chosen. So he's under Damascus word, he's miserable. He not satisfied with arresting Christians. Because I'm having an inward struggle going on. He's honestly, you know, to Damascus with a warrant to lock up some more Christian. And daddy said, no, no, Paul, enough. It is hard for thee to kick against the brick. You are called, come now, time, time, time. Lick him down. Glory, lick him down, blind him in the natural. Three days my meditate, a woman days he was. I sight receiving, pick up immediately, I preach Jesus. Daddy says, time for you know, Paul, you are chosen. And as I said to you, the prophecy that he got from Ananias, this, this mash up a lot of the things that battle in your church. The prophecy that Paul got was not from an apostle or prophet, you know? Is a certain disciple. Am I right, named Ananias? God sent for him to receive this sight and to be filled with the Holy Ghost. And the man said, listen, Paul, I'm going to tell you how much great things you are going to suffer for God's sake. A typical apostle and prophet to do that, said Paul, you know much car? You know bigger church going be? You know much car you want that, Paul? You know much jet day you want, buy and fly? The prophecy that Paul get. God said, I'm going to show you what great things you are going to suffer for my name's sake. Fire for them, vile prophet. Telling people lie. Because they're not telling people that too much tribulation, they're going to enter the kingdom, no matter, everything is sweet sailing. I just want blessing to another blessing, I don't say it well. I don't say it well. Every son of a process. Every son of a process. If you're not processed, you're a bastard. Isn't that what Mr. Say in the scripture says? So a lot of the men, they might preach a bastard gospel. Leave them alone. That is what the church in Loudesia is about, I am rich and increasing goods, same thing we had about the church. I have need of nothing. God said, you know, you're miserable, naked. That is the prosperity gospel on here from North America. Now, hallelujah. The word is the seed that comes out of God's mouth. And it has the energy to perform everything that it is sent to produce. Just as a seed planted in the dark soil of a garden springs forth in the world of light and is raised up into another form as a plant or a tree or whatever it is. So the seed of God, the sperm, the Greek says, brings forth on another dimension, a born-again person. As I said to you, every time somebody is born again, it is the ongoing incarnation, the word becoming flesh again. That is why I said to you, the angels rejoice every time a sinner repent, just as though they rejoice when Jesus was born. Hallelujah. We link that to a man and he can't, he said, look, he said, you can read the word, no man? Why said the angels rejoice when a sinner repent? Them sees the ongoing incarnation, a dead place again, the word becoming flesh in somebody else. So when God, hallelujah, projects himself out of himself to bring forth himself in another dimension, you know what happened? There's an intersect with time and eternity meet. And the word is the passage, the way from eternity to time and from spirit to matter. Let me share something with you, what will happen now? We shall not all sleep, or we shall all be changed because God wants to take us back into that spirit dimension that the word came from. But we shall all be changed, am I right? In a moment, in the twinkling of an eye. And remember, I said the word moment there is not a time-space word. It's the Greek word, atomus, is the atomic structure of your body, right, yeah? To have a body like Jesus' body. Where you can step into eternity. You don't have worry about time or space no more, you don't need smell good no more and all of that. You understand? You don't need smell good. Different kind of body. Hallelujah. So the new spiritual human creation been formed by the word through the spirit or the seed of God, born again of an incorruptible seed. Second Corinthians five seventeen puts it this way, if any man be in Christ, he's a new creation. And Jesus is the beginning of the creation of God. So God's word cannot be divorced or separated from it. When that word falls upon our spiritual ears, bringing fear, creative power is released because fear come in by hearing and hearing by the word. So especially when we take that word and speak it, come into agreement with it, since we are made in God's image and likeness, it has creative power also. So it says, Jesus, the beginning of the creation of God, the source and origin of creation. Eternal one, he's the first and the last. He is the transcendent one above all creation. Hallelujah. Now let's go a little further. I want to share something we can know. As I was meditating, oh, to God. Hallelujah. As I was meditating, we need to move now from profession to possession. We have a lot of declaration, but very little possession. Now, let me take you someplace. Hallelujah. The church in Revelation, chapter three. I'm going to go ahead on myself and touch something as I was meditating and studying. I want to bring something to your attention and meditate about this time that we have. In Revelation, chapter three, God found fault with this church and he told him something to do. Hallelujah. God warned the church verse sixteen of chapter three. Because you are loo, wall, and neither cold nor hot, I will spew thee out of thy mouth, I will look at you. Because thou sayest that I'm rich and increasing goods and I have need of nothing. I know it's not that thou art wretched, miserable, poor, blind and naked. I counsel thee to buy of me gold tried in the fire that thou mayst be rich and white women, that thou mayst be clothed, and that the shame of thy nakedness do not appear. But anoint thy eyes with isab, that thou may see. Now I want to go someplace with you. The concept of anointing, the eyes with isab. Hallelujah. This little place Loudesia was noted for its medical school. And there are two kinds of medicine that they were experts at. To cure ear ache and certain eye powder they had. And I found out, for those who interested, the powder was called Tefra Phrygia. And it was world famous eye powder that came from Loudesia could treat eye problems. So when Jesus is telling them to buy isab, they could relate to what he say. You understand the point I'm making? Now, now let me give you the spiritual thing now, let me say. Paul is praying for the Ephesian church in Ephesians one, verse eighteen. Let's go Ephesians one. That the eyes of your understanding, hallelujah, would be enlightened. What Paul says? The eyes of your understanding would be enlightened. That you may note what is the hope of his calling and what the riches of the glory of his inheritance in you, the saints. So you know, you have God's inheritance. Now if a man own the whole world already, and he said, you think you might inherit anything to wash your business? You have to understand how God see you. We are very low Christ esteem, many of us. That's part of our problem. They go to church and preachers, beat you down. So the isab, the things of God cannot be comprehended with the carnal mind or own understanding. So notice Paul experience in Acts chapter nine, verse seventeen and eighteen. Let's go to Acts chapter nine, we mentioned it in Boston. Let's go to Paul's experience in Acts chapter nine, what happened to Saul? Acts chapter nine, hallelujah. He's blinded. You know, some mornings I get up and pray, remember why, I will start looking. We see the sun coming, you can't look on the brightness or the fullness of it, you know? Or the sun in the morning, you're blind, you know? Now you can imagine what happened to Paul, the kind of glory that hit him. Verse seventeen and eighteen. Paul, the glory licking them and blind. And Ananias, the same man went his way and entered into the house, putting his hands on him, said, brother Saul, the Lord even Jesus that had appeared under thee the way as thou camest, had sent me, that thou might have seen thy sight and be filled with the Holy Ghost. Immediately there fell from his eyes as it had been scales and he received sight for it and arose and was baptized. Now, there's more to it than you think. Because by verse twenty, he started preaching. It was not just natural eyesight he can get. In Job chapter nineteen. Job, Hallelujah. You know what Job mean? Is near me persecuted. Job. Let's go to chapter nineteen. There's something I want to look at concerning this man. Job ninety, Job with the power. Hallelujah. Job nineteen. Go to God. Job said something here in verse twenty-five. He says, for I know that my redeemer living and that he shall stand at the lap of days upon the earth. And though after my skin worms destroy this body, yet in my flesh shall I what? Whom shall I see for myself? And my eye shall behold and not another, though my reins be consumed within me. Now listen to me carefully. Now, as I did some studies. I came to understand that one of the meaning of the israel literally means a plaster that is placed upon the eyes to draw out all the infection and impurities that cause blurred vision. Now listen to me carefully, the danger of some of us and where we are fellowshiping. It doesn't matter if a man go to the seminar. If he's not born again and being taught by the Holy Spirit, he's a dangerous man to be offering you the bread of God, the word of God. Cannot have an insight. You would not want a blind cook in a restaurant to prepare your food. Am I right? Who would you want a blind man in a seminar, have doctorate and thing, but maybe not even say, I did this as a professional. And I'm going to teach you hermeneutics, how to interpret the scriptures. You have some people don't have our education, but when they read the Bible, them get insight that twist of professors. You have some guys at seminar, you know. It's a job, you know. They go study like you're studying English. Not revelator, understanding. Now, so you would not want a blind cook to prepare your meal, would it? Alright? He not know what is a condiment in my pick up our pies. Blind persons spiritually have no vision of what the Father desires. So the Bible for some of these people is a closed book to the most educated, unconverted and unanointed person, but is open to the most ignorant believer. Christ is the healer of our eyes, amen? So he says, again in Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen, we are, there's no vision. The people perish, am I right? Now, can I say something with you? The ultimate purpose of seeing is to be conformed to what you are seeing. That is why what you see must be a proper vision of God. Because you want to be conformed to whatever you are seeing. That's why it says in second Corinthians chapter three, verse eighteen. We all with unveiled face beholding as in a glass the glory of the Lord. You are changed into the same image. You are being changed into whatever you are seeing. Similarly, you become what you eat, remember? Now. So the ultimate purpose of seeing is toward becoming what you see. That's why you have to have revelator, understanding. I want to correct something again. A lot of people was in certain past movement, Pentecostal and Charismatic movement and some movement and they are crying out for God to do it the same way. God, now go back and do things the same way he did. Stop praying for that. God, now go back and do what he did in the past. God is constantly doing new things. Because there's more in God. There's progressive revelation of God. He does not retrogress to do it again. God not do that. The key is to tap into what God is doing, not what he did. To see him as he is, not as he was. As we see, we are changed. Now, the point I want to close it is this. In your natural birth, I pointed out to you, you get five natural senses, am I right? Normal child, born naturally. When you're born in the spirit, you get five senses too. But you have to develop them, just like all you develop as a child. Sight, hearing, smelling, tasting, touching. So that's the natural physiological, soulical senses which feed information to our natural mind. Now, you're born again now of the incorruptible seed, born from above. So we receive five spiritual senses on a higher plane, the plane of the spirit, not the natural. Now, Romans chapter eight. This is where I want to head. I want to take you someplace. And then we want to pray. Believe God did something for some of us. Romans chapter eight. Hallelujah. Jesus. Romans chapter eight. Verse sixteen. The Spirit himself be our witness with our spirit, that we are children of God, am I right? The Spirit be our witness. Hallelujah. That we are children of God. Hallelujah. Galatians chapter four. Let's go and look at one more scripture because I want to take you someplace. Let's go to Galatians chapter four and verse six. And because you are sons, God has sent for the spirit of his son into your hearts, crying, Abba, father. Now, foundational scriptures. You have been born of the spirit, but you need to grow. First Corinthians chapter two. Let's give some scripture because you have some long weekend you can study. First Corinthians chapter two. Let's start at verse nine where Paul picks up a quotation from Isaiah. But as it is written, verse nine. I had not seen, nor e'er heard, neither entered in the heart of man things which God had prepared for them that love him. But God has revealed them to us all by spirit, for the spirit searching the deep things of God. For what knoweth the things of a man saith the spirit of man, which is in him. Even so the things of God know no man but the spirit of God. Now, we have received not the spirit of the world. And he said, this be a ganadias season. The spirit of the world big, not this Aliyah season. This Christmas thing and Santa Claus and Antichrist and Santa Claus. Telling lies to the children, Santa Claus leave, talk and things on the tree for you. I still a bit in the land and you are, you are silver god of truth. Tell lie about Santa Claus. Look at the foolishness that you are doing. Tell myths to the children. Spirit of the world. What I told you, a man. A man of God, it is said years ago during the Christmas time. Start buying some spirit of side jerk. I wanted a spirit that was about the Santa Claus spirit. If you have somebody that get delivered on the first, I get, oh, oh, oh. Yes, man. Now. Now. When you're born again, first of all, we took that scripture, eyes of your understanding, you what? So sight. By degrees, you have to move from fear to faith and fear come in by what? So we have the hearing part covered. We come in to touch the Lord God with his invisible presence. As we fellowship with him, I recense his presence at time, am I right? And little by little we taste and see that the Lord is good according to the service in Psalm thirty-four, verse eighteen. Then we moved to another dimension, discern and appreciate and your spiritual senses, you can start discern and smelling. The sweet incense and aroma of the presence of God. Now, so as the natural senses can be cultivated, so can the spiritual ones. And the cultivation of these spiritual senses constitutes and marks us indicating to us that we are growing. Your spiritual senses should be growing. One of the greatest thing you need in this entire right now, discernment. So much deception out there. Now, the scriptures warn us, we can have eyes and see not, and ears that we hear not. Am I right? So if you can have eyes and you see not, and you have ears and you hear not, think about this stuff. So you have two sets of ears. And you have two sets of eyes. No, you have two. One natural, one spiritual. You have eyes when you see not, and you have ears and you hear not. Because there's a, you have another eye that you're not using. You have another ear that you're not using because they're operating at a different level and a frequency. Now let's go to Hebrews chapter eleven. See what happened to this man named Moses. Hebrews eleven. The key thing for you, I want to suggest in this twenty twenty-one. Cultivate your spiritual senses, that nobody can make you become a idiot. Hebrews eleven. Look what it says about Moses. Verse twenty-seven, Hallelujah. By faith Moses was so eager, not fearing the wrath of the king. Why? For he endured as seeing him who is invisible. The man is what? Seeing him who is invisible. We need discernment. You should be able to go to a fellowship now and start discern and become carnality versus spirituality. Well, but you're you. No, no idea. You need to discern because something that might feed your spirit. Entertainment. And the spirit man is not fed. So the spirit that you receive from God, your regenerated spirit sees what others cannot see, can see God. And your eyes spiritually can be trained, as a matter of fact, my wife has been teaching me something. You even training your eyes in the natural, they go to a place to see things that most people don't see. We don't know it's a lot of things that we enter in the office sometimes. But people are trained when they enter an office to see things and notice things that many others don't notice. You can do the same thing in the natural. Your spiritual move from the natural to the spiritual. Your spiritual eyes can be trained to see things that others cannot see. You go to a fellowship and people say, oh, only for a great thing that God has a carnality to this. Your eyes are anointed to see you. Now, I want to pray for the saints as we're stepping into this new year. Hallelujah. Where I've come in, you know, I pray for you because I want God to activate. If it's not working the way it ought to work, your spiritual senses. And not only your spiritual senses, but like God. For those who may be even watching, would he touch some people? Let me say something now. The end time church is not going out as a weak, inemic church. He's going to present himself a glorious church without spot or wrinkle or any such thing. Creation is groaning. I'm looking at the news now, Mrs. Some, I mean, they say there's some temperature in America. As over the world, creation is groaning, ruining. We are thinking to see the manifestation of the sons of God. If one mature son of God could do what he did. Jesus. What will happen? Let me say something to you people again. Can I take you to some deep water? God, not going back to Pentecostal and Charismatic movement. What happened in the Charismatic and Pentecostal movement was good for a time. God says, leave that feast now, go on to the feast of Tabernacles. Go to the third dimension. We have walked in the outer court, pass over, hey, bless God. Pentecost, yes, some fruit and gifts of the spirit. And that has all dried up now. So a lot of carnal thing people trying to, let me give you an example. You go to a church now and I'm trying to teach you the prophesy. Go to a seminar for a weekend and them say you are prophet. You're business. And they say apostle. God, God beyond that. Creation is groaning. Hallelujah. God, let me share something with you. The Pentecostal charismatic realm, according to the tabernacle of Moses. The second dimension, the measurement was twenty times ten times ten. Give you two toes roughly. No time in the history of Christianity have we ever had so many people filled with Holy Ghost as we have now, am I right? But that realm of the tabernacle is crowded. God, by his spirit, is opening up the third dimension of the glory for our people to step into that dimension. That's where the glory do it. That's where the glory was. God, in answer to the prayer of Jesus, Father, the glory that I have, I have given to them. Hallelujah. Christ in us. Not just hope anymore, but by faith transferred, hallelujah, hallelujah. The third dimension, God is opening up to some people now. Join them, wooing them, wooing them. Hallelujah to come. Deep calling unto deep. The tired play games in the Pentecostal realm, pushing on people, so they stay in this group, get up back, see me. And all of a hand, you tie my tie, I tie your tie. All kind of question of the dogs. Hallelujah. Tell the truth, I share with them. Where is God? You know, like that going on. People coming in a wheelchair, then go back out. Tell the truth. But last have you seen? Somebody going to a service. Blind eyes being open. People jumping out of a wheelchair. Church hall of the shop down the car and freedom criminal. You have got some church now, we say the speaker box, then they have it, grill them up, reopen the ceiling. No reverential fear of God. Has God lost any of his power? Let's start. Let's start, we're going to have communion. But by God's grace, hallelujah. Let's believe God. That as we step into this new year. Whether you want Jewish, you are. We were saying. The year of the pain, the mouth. We have talked and talk and talk. Confess, because the year of the pain, isn't that right? The speech. So. We have been declaring, but where is the possessing? What they, reggae singer said. Not a bag of more. Action, not a bag of more. Hallelujah. God. We look to you. We look to you, God. Hallelujah. As the deer panted for the water books, so panted to our souls after you, the living God. Hallelujah to the Lord. Praise you, Jesus. Let's believe God. Take the limits off the Holy One of Israel. God, we are here this afternoon. You said you are able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask God to sing. By the power which is at work in us. So God, this afternoon. As we are stepping into a new year. As the prophet Isaiah said in Isaiah four, the tree. Considerly not the former things, neither ponder the things of old. For behold, I do a new thing, and now it shall spring forth. God, let a new thing spring forth. How mash, oh, God almighty. How great is our God? Sing with me, how great is our God? And all will see how great. How great is our God? Let's see it again. How great is our God? Sing with me, how great is our God? And all will see how great, how great is our God? Name of all names. Name of all names. Hallelujah. How worthy you are, Lord, great. And how hard to see how great is the Lord. Amen, hallelujah. God. Almighty, El Eleon, the most high God. Oh, we bless you, God. Lord, we borrow the psalm and said, bless the Lord, oh, my soul. And with all that is within us. We bless your great and holy name. You forgive us every iniquity, transgression and sin. You heal us of every disease. God, do some healing tonight. Do some healing tonight. God almighty. People here, people watching and people will hear and watch. Let the healing virtue of Jehovah Rapha be released by God. God, we take the limits off you. Move by your spirit, God. And bring deliverance and healing. From pain, from suffering. From lack. In the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. God, activate. Activate. Our spiritual senses. Spiritual sight and hearing and touching. God, activate our spiritual senses. Lord, we do not wish. In the same time. To be deceived by seducing spirits or doctrines of devils. Increase our discernment or sensitivity to your spirit, God. Yes. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. And God, we have, some of us have already been deceived. I rebuke the spirit of deception in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. Open our spiritual eyes that you might see. Open our spiritual ears that you might hear. Yes, daddy. Yes, daddy. Hallelujah. And for some of us who have already had our spiritual senses activated, take it to another level. Take them to another level, daddy. Hallelujah. As it says in Psalm of Solomon, give us dove's eyes. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Grow with your God. Lord God almighty, let us be anointed with the sevenfold spirit of God. Be anointed without measure. Hallelujah. The spirit of the Lord, let it come upon us. Spirit of counsel, the spirit of might, the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of knowledge, the spirit of understanding and the spirit of the fear of the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Glow with your God. God mash up the dallyos them in your church. Bring forth a people. Whose passion is to pursue you, God. Do away with carnality and frivolity and likeness, God. Bring a sobriety. In the house, God. And a reverential fear of the comeback, God. It's a day that the other vessels of the Lord must be clean. Let us as ministers of God walk. In holiness and sanctification. That we don't bring reproach on the gospel. God almighty. God, you said judgment begin first at the house, you know. God almighty. Cleanse us, God, cleanse us, cleanse us. Cleanse us, God. Hallelujah. Cleanse us, daddy. Hallelujah. I want you to lift up your bread. Father, we thank you. Hallelujah. The night when Jesus was betrayed. He took bread. And he broke it and he said, this is my body. Lord, you know the body of Jesus, here it is now. Is totally immune to any kind of sickness. The life force of that body's spirit. Resurrected and glorified. God, you said, if the same spirit that raised Jesus from the dead dwell in us, we know it will have a future quicker. But God, we can party, give us some of that even now. Quicker, our bodies in a measure even up. Touch the cells of our bodies, God. And bring health. God. You said Moses is a natural, the natural force in your body, a hundred and twenty years of age. Natural force was not abated and his eyesight was not dim. God, you say Elijah run before the chariot of hell. Supernatural power. God almighty. He said Philip was transported as he baptized that man. And transported to Azotus, God. My God. In this new year, God. Do some things. Do some things, God. Cleanse us and release a fresh wave of your spirit, God. That will bring the fear of you back into your house and draw in the sea. Those that need to be saved, God. Those you have ordained to the salvation. God almighty. Let's partake of this bread and believe that God will do something in our bodies. And for those of you who are listening and will watch. Just at the anointing. Will have the same potency to touch you, here you are. In the name of Jesus. And bring change and healing and transformation, let's partake of the bread and faith in Jesus' name. Likewise, after supposed end, he took the cup. Said, this is a new covenant in my blood. Better covenant with better promises. A better priest, a better mediator. A priesthood after the order of Melchizedek. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. God almighty. Father, we partake of this wine. It's a wine that makes glad the heart of man. I rebuke every spirit of heaviness. And disappear from the lives of your people that we hear this word in the name of Jesus. Let joy spring forth. Because the joy of the Lord is our strength. And God, as we are stepping into a new year. And they'll be watching night services and all that, God. Let it not be the same old, same old. God. Speak. Speak mighty God. Reveal yourself. And we covenant to give you all the praise. Glory and the honor, God, we are asking you. Arrest some of those in our sorority by your spirit. Arrest some of those in our sorority by your spirit, God. You said the heart of the king lies in the hands of the Lord and your turn is a stream which you serve, but you will. Turn the heart of some of those in parliament to you, God. Some of these were men and women who used to go to church and were exposed to the world. God, arrest them by your spirit. Lord, no more abortion business. Park them things in a parliament. In the name of Jesus. Lord, we don't want no more innocent bloodshed for the land. God almighty. Lord, and we are the workers of iniquity. Operating from demonic altars. Are working against your purpose in Jamaica. Burn up them altars, they go. Burn up them demonic altars, God, in the name of Jesus. Blanket Jamaica, God. With the efficacious blood from the great point to my right point. Blanket Jamaica. In the name of. God, we will not give one inch of Jamaica to the enemy. Jamaica belongs to Jesus. God almighty. Hallelujah. God. We want to remind you. Many saints prayed for years concerning Jamaica and you gave them words, God. God, we want to remind you of those words that you give those people. Because you watch over your word to perform it. God almighty, is it not time for some of these words to be fulfilled? Many have died and are before your throne even now, God. And you gave them words concerning their children. Bringing their children now, God. In the name of Jesus. God almighty. We come to the courts of heaven, but you have invited us to come boldly to the throne. So God, we are making our petitions known to you. God. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. We give you all the praise. You are worthy. You are worthy. God. We hear about eyes out, touch eyes. Heal eyes. Heal eyes, God, in the name of Jesus. Confirm your word with signs following. And we covenant to give you the praise in the name of Jesus. Let people's eyesight be restored. In Jesus' name. Hallelujah. Let's partake of the wine that makes glad the heart of man. In Jesus' name. Hallelujah. I want you to lift your hands after you, we'll speak a blessing over you. God. This afternoon. And wherever people are, different time zone. We come to you, daddy. God almighty. Intervene. In the lives of your people. Intervene as only you can, God. That you will taste a dimension of victory. That you have not previously experienced. That our enemies will become our footstool in the name of Jesus. That the victory, God, that you give to each and every one of us would cause even our enemies to turn to you. Bring in the souls, God. Bring in the souls, God, we release the spirit of adoption, the spirit of sonship. Let it go forth and bring in people, God. Thousands upon thousands in this land. We call them in now, God, in the name of Jesus. Because you say it's not your will that any perish. God almighty, bring them in. Bring them in, God. Bring them in. Bring them in, God, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. In the name of Jesus. And God. We just speak your Melchizedek, bless him over these people. We said blessed are thou of the most high God. Possessor of heaven and earth. And blessed be the most high God. Who puts every one of your enemies under your feet. You are blessed in your going out. You are blessed in your coming. You are blessed in whatever you put your hands. We decree and declare. No curse can work against us in the name of Jesus. We are bought, cancelled, everything. We abort, cancel every satanic plot. In the name of Jesus. And God, we just say, be thou glorified. In the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus. Take your rightful place. Reign, Jesus, reign. Reign, Jesus, reign. Reign, Jesus, reign. So let it be written, so let it be done. In Jesus' name. Amen and amen. Glory to God. Amen. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Glory to God.
Glory to God.
Glory to God. Hallelujah.
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 Hallelujah. Hallelujah. It is well, it is done, it is when it is done. I don't know where we would be, where I would be, let my children have. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. I shudder to think. Thank you, most merciful God. Thank you, Lord. It is well.
It is well.
It is well, I just said it. It is well, I just said it, but I luxely. Let me say it, it is well. I didn't need this, you know, it is what I'm wanting. Man, you can't miss.
I hear you, I hear you, it is well.
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 It is well. So.
Bless you, Mr. Dennis, bless you.
I'm thanking you. Oh, blessed in the name of the Lord.
Every one of them, let them become your footstool.
Hey.
In Jesus' name.
I receive it in Jesus' name. Glory to God in the highest.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah, he alone deserves to.
Anybody's become your footstool.
Amen, amen.
Intervene in Sandra's family. Draw them, God, with strong cause of love to your.
Amen, we come in agreement. We come in agreement.
Hallelujah.
We connect with this prayer.
Hallelujah. Draw Moses' husband to you, God, in the name of Jesus.
Oh, yes.
Hallelujah. We bless you. We bless you, God.
Holy name.
Amen, sister.
Amen, amen, amen.
Amen.
Amen and amen and amen.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.